First order of business is pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, folks. We have nobody signed up to speak under public comment yet? Yeah, well, we're gonna approve the minutes first. You need to sign up, James, up on the table, okay? Thank you. So, the first items on the agenda are approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 14th, 2019 meeting minutes. Moved by Ilda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm abstaining because I was not there. Then we have approval of the August 28th meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Tracy. Can I get a second? Second by Ilda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mike, are you abstaining or abstaining? Mike's abstaining from that one.
Yes, I said I, I'm sorry.
Then we have approval of the September 3rd meeting. They are not a board retreat minutes, but special meeting minutes. That wasn't a board retreat, that was a special meeting. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second? Second, Mike. Oh, Jaime needs to get his chair in. Welcome, Jaime. We're on item number 3C. So, all those in favor of the minute, I mean, all those who approve the minute? Taking a vote on approving the minutes from the special meeting on September 3rd? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Then workshop meeting minutes for September 25th. Can I get a motion?
Busy meeting month, huh?
Can I get a motion? Seconded by Jaime. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I'm abstaining because I was not there. And then September 30th, special meeting minutes. Moved by Tracy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ilda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mike? Abstaining. Ilda, are you approving them? Ilda's in favor, so one abstention. Thank you very much. That was just a lot of minutes to go through. And now we're on to public comment, and I understand that James Flores has signed up, so you're on.
Hello, hello. My name is James Flores from Willemanti. I'm here today not to support my dream team, not to support my sister Patricia Garcia. I'm here to promote get out the vote in the Latino community. Latino vota. As you know, I've been involved in Latino vota for the last 20 years. And my dream team and my sister Garcia is aside until November 1st. For the next 20 days, I'm gonna focus only Latino get out to vote. Latino Boricua campaign. Somebody here offered me to talk about new member in my team. I cannot talk about my dream team now because I want to focus only in my campaign for Latino vote. As you know, Latino vote, especially Puerto Rican, we have been citizens. I was born in Hartford. Even I speak broken English, I was born in Hartford. I had the right to vote. I know a lot of people not Puerto Rican, they are citizens, and they had a right to vote. How they vote, I don't care now. I take care of that until November 1st. But now I want you to help me out. Republican, Green Party, Baron Line, Democrat. Let's work together to increase voting participation. As you know, Willemanti have one of the lower voting participation. The lower in the state. Sometime we vote, when everybody vote 80, 70, we vote only 20, sometime 18. Let's do what is right. Don't attack me for now, please. Give me a break. All my good friends in the Facebook, I know they listen. Please, give me a break until November 1st. Don't attack me. Let me relax and let me focus in the Latino Boricua vota. I'm gonna be a good boy for the next 20 days. But then, until November 1st, come after me. But I need to focus, like I say, in Latino vota. Repeat, my dream team and my sister Patricia Garcia had to be in the side for the next 20 days. If you want, I give you copies. Please, photocopy, pass it. Most other people, when they're gonna vote, this is like a plane. How these people go like this? Now, if you're gonna vote, don't forget, you have to flip over. People will vote for me because I'm the other side, but I don't care. If people are gonna vote in this side, they're gonna vote. You need to vote and flip it over. Give it to people. Give it away. Most other people, the day they're gonna vote, especially, if you live in Wyndham, you vote only for one person for town council. Willemanti vote for four. And sometimes people in Wyndham looking for people that are running for Willemanti. Let's educate people. By the way, 10% of the people vote wrong. But I don't count because their vote is wrong. Let's work together, give James Flores a break until November 1st, and let's work together to get people out to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's an important message for people to vote. Is there anybody else who's signed up to speak under public comment? No? Okay. So, now we'll move on to reports, and we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you.
Start with. Thank you.
Good evening. We'll start with some accomplishments and some recognition, award and recognition. You have about two pages of recognition, so I'm not gonna go over all of those, but do want to point out that our high school soccer team is doing very, very well. I was able to see one of the games and that they are, is a very powerful team. And Alfonso Vasquez, I think, had his 101 goal last game, so great recognition. Want to mention a couple of rising seniors that did an internship this summer at Electric Boat, and they were very, very successful. The community college were very proud of those students. They're in your pocket. And we received lots of accolade about the students from both, from the community college and from Electric Boat. Also, the first page of this semester came out in the Willemanti Today. As you know, the high school has a page in the Chronicle of Education Chronicle, led by the writing tutor and our teacher, Dara Bowling. And the first one came out October 2nd, and it was a fantastic, fantastic page, so I encourage you guys to take a look at it. We want to congratulate Dr. Ratna, the entire ESOB, Bilingual and Word Languages Department. As you know, they receive an award for their newsletter, the Apex Award, and we want to congratulate Dr. Mudambi and every single one, Lauren, every single one in that department. There are some others, award recognition, but I think you have it in your pocket. Dr. Mudambi and I have invited to present at a national conference starting July 18th, so we are representing the district at that national conference. So those are the awards. Parental engagement is something that we continue to work on and is not a one-day situation. It's not a one-day strategy, it's a year-long strategy. And it's very stated in our mission and our vision and theory of action. In our theory of action, it states that effective engagement with families and community is one of our goals. In our vision, it says that we support families and community and students. And in our mission, it says that we'll have deep engagement. So on a constant and a regular basis, we are looking for new strategies and new initiatives and strategies on how to increase communication and engagement with our parents. And we look at what other districts are doing across the country, what are the latest trend. Couple months ago, we came across a tool called Parents Square. And Parents Square gives parents the opportunity, or gives the district the opportunity, to really develop a common, consistent, district-wide approach to school, home, base communication. This approach and this tool was developed actually by a mother in Buffalo, New York. She is a professor at one of the universities, and she stayed home for a sabbatical. And she was thinking, how can I communicate and have more engagement with school? And in 2011, this approach and this tool came from her. Because of that, Parents Square is very, very passionate about better connecting school and parents. And to this end, they're very innovative in their thinking, they're very innovative in their approach, and they're very intentional on how they build that relations. I asked tonight, I asked Mr. Rand, Mr. Randall, Mr. Ryan O'Neil and Mrs. Chaney to come and present to you a program that we want to pilot, Parents Square, that will increase definitely the two-way communication with our parents. And right now, what we don't, we have is Blackboard, that is a one-way communication tool. And as we look at this, this tool is a two-way communication. So Brandon and Ms. Chaney is here to present to you Parents Square as we're looking to pilot it.
Well, I should say that that table is right in front of the screen, so for the board members, it's hard to see.
It's not included in our packet, is it?
Right, yeah, so can, is that where?
Margaret has handouts for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
So as Dr. Garcia introduced, it's very important for us to engage our families. And the state of Connecticut, the Connecticut State Department of Education, along with some other partners, actually released about a year ago a report called Full, Equal, and Equitable Partnerships with Families. And in there, in this report, they included guiding principles for family engagement. And I've listed the seven of them here, but the ones highlighted in blue are specific to what we think the Parents Square program is going to help us achieve. Building collaborative trusting relationships focused on learning. Obviously, the most important relationship between families and the school is the relationship that the teacher has with parents in terms of the day-to-day engagement and learning with students. And so we feel that this Parents Square will help us with that. Also, to listen to what families say about their children's interests and challenges. We believe that Parents Square will provide us that opportunity for parents to be able to talk to teachers on a regular basis through this tool. And then the third one about sharing information frequently with families about how their children are doing. There was, you know, probably once upon a time where an open house and a parent-teacher conference was enough, but where things are moving so quickly and we really want to serve students, we feel that Parents Square will also help us with that specific guideline. So just in introduction, Parents Square is a platform that is a family engagement platform that will, that we have purchased to put in place, and we put it in place across the district, but it is going to be rolled out in pieces. The benefits is that this will, first of all, ensure that the district can follow student privacy laws regarding these kinds of engagements. We can provide the ability to monitor communication. It will provide a consistent medium district-wide, and all communication can be translated into all the family languages. So I believe that we have 20 or 21 different languages that are spoken in the district, although primarily English and Spanish. But this will let, through this platform, a parent can, excuse me, a teacher can send a note home. It can be translated to Arabic or Polish or whatever that home preferred language is, and likewise will be translated from that language back to the parent, back to the teacher, so that people can correspond. And this platform also provides messages in a manner that parents prefer, which research is showing that more parents are preferring to receive texts about information so that they can then consume it as they want to, not necessarily the alert calls or emails. And this platform does all of those things, and parents will get to choose. So we feel that as a tool, that this really will be beneficial.
Thank you. One other thing to note out there is, you know, a tool like this is something that has been requested by our school governance councils and other parent groups as a way to increase communication with the schools. With Parents Square, when in public schools, we can unify all communication tools used in our classrooms, sites, and districts with oversight throughout, especially for parents that have students in multiple schools, like myself. You know, oftentimes, we'll be sitting down for dinner, and I'll get a call from Wyndham Center, and one from ECC, and one from the middle school, all within five minutes of each other. With this, especially non-urgent messages can be batched together to come in all at once via whatever means we prefer, so we're not having our dinner interrupted three times by multiple messages from the schools. Initially, we're gonna focus on the communication between teachers and parents. However, there are a bunch of other modules in here, such as online permission slips, online payments for things such as before and after-school, and things like that that we'll expand into as we continue to use the platform. Other things we can do with it, conference sign-ups, stuff like that. An expanded usage will solve issues around sending urgent alerts. Right now, we have the Blackboard Connect platform, which is very outdated and very stagnant. It really hasn't changed since the district started using it before I started in the district. And it's, you know, a common source of complaints from parents that it's not very effective in getting the message out. And it's very, it only allows for one-way communication from the school to the parents without any sort of dialogue or feedback going back and forth, which is something that this platform would allow for. Like I said, it does use multiple means to communicate with parents, and they all have, they have their, they can set their preferences for what they like. You can go by text, email, push notifications to an app, voice calls. They can see all the messages on a website, and there are native apps for both iOS and Android. It might be a little hard to see, it might be easier in your packet, but you know, there's multiple ways for the staff to share the everyday activities that go on in the classrooms and in the schools with parents. They can create what are posts, which is kind of like a mini private social network. It feels a lot like Facebook when you're using it, but it doesn't have all of the security and privacy implications that using Facebook involves. Teachers can share pictures and files, videos. Parents can comment on a post, but it doesn't create a dialogue, it only goes back to the teacher. So there's no opportunity for a back-and-forth on, in public. And it really is a mobile, it really is optimized for mobile, which is how most of our parents prefer to get information these days. Parents and teachers can also do direct messaging, which is like a real-time chat. You know, a teacher can create a message, and like Margaret was speaking to, teacher can create a message in English, and if the parent has selected that they prefer to receive their communication in Spanish or any one of the 50 languages that the platform supports, it will automatically do a translation. For our more common languages like Spanish, if the teacher's fluent in it, it can do the automated translation, but allow the teacher to preview it and make sure it's correct before actually sending it to the parent. And then the parent can actually reply in their native language, and a translation will be received back by the teacher. So it eliminates some of that language barrier that exists. The teachers will be able to quickly select recipients, whether it's individual parents or their entire class or all of the classes that they teach. They can send message privately or to a group to create like a group chat there. And it's, like I said, has the real-time two-way translation. Schools and the district can also do district-wide alerts, similar to our current Blackboard Connect Alert Now calls. And again, this follows the parents' communication preferences, so it's not inundating them with multiple messages. We can do a voice call for the urgent issues, like if there's an emergency at a school, we can do an emergency voice call that goes out to make sure the message gets received. They can do email, and again, we have the flexible recipient list, so we can easily, we're working in the implementation now, for example, to be able to say, okay, middle school bus 17 has an issue. We can just quickly select that group and send that message out.
So as Brendan pointed out, initially, we're planning to concentrate on the two-way communication between teachers and parents. And even though this has expansive capabilities that perhaps by this time next year we will be using, we're trying to focus on making sure that teachers and parents will be most comfortable with it. But in the long run, there are all kinds of great attributes that it has. For example, parent-teacher conferences at the middle school and at the high school. Parents need to log in and choose a parent-teacher conference time. This has the capability to do that. You can also put out requests regarding permission slips, or if you're looking for volunteers, or if you need special supplies and you're asking for parents to sign up to bring those things in. It'll have those kinds of capabilities. But what we're really wanting to concentrate on right now is that, just that day-to-day, what's happening in the classroom, either as a group with some pictures, with some video, or some small group messages that say, hey, the parents of these four people, you know, these four kids, please know that they're doing a presentation on Wednesday, you know, please make sure that they're preparing for it. And that, that back and forth. So currently, we are using, teachers are using free services from a multitude of different kinds of service providers, Remind, Blooms, Dojo, there are several of them. And what we, and because obviously they feel the need to be able to communicate, but that's not a district-sponsored service, they're free services. And so this way, by us bringing this under the umbrella of a district platform, we have the control. We also are providing them something that hopefully students can use year to year to year, or families can use year to year across all schools, and it's consistent. And so this is part of the district dashboard, so we can also look and see which teachers are using it, what families are and are not receiving messages, so that we can call and check, did you change your cell number? Is there some better way to communicate with you? And we can also go in and monitor messages if we feel that we need to do that. And that, again, now with everyone having their own free service that they're managing on their own, we do not have that luxury. So just in conclusion, our rollout plan is we're focusing on the middle school. We have done a couple of teacher training sessions at the middle school with some of their support staff. Classroom lists have already been downloaded into Parents Square, so that that comes automatically out of eSchool, so that, you know, today, a teacher, if they chose, could log on and communicate with classrooms. And that is updated every night. So this is something that will be a lot easier for teachers because they don't have to maintain their own list. This list will be maintained every night. And then the plan is that we'll make it available to any teacher in the district who wants to use Parents Square this year. We're prepared to support them with the family liaisons and the admin in each building, as well as our staff, to train, so if there's a kindergarten teacher at North Wyndham School that really wants to get involved with Parents Square right away, we encourage them to do that, and we'll try to support them. And then, in the long run, we hope that in the 2021 school year, we will roll this out and hopefully replace Blackboard, and this will become our platform of preference. Are there any questions?
So this looks like a pretty good tool. I've had a couple of years' experience with translation to Arabic, and I've learned a few things. So you may want to play around with Back Translate for a while because automatic translation has its limitations. It does not deal well with compound sentences. It does not deal well with adverb clauses. You know, it does not deal well with thoughts of more than about six or eight words. Simple declarative sentences tend to come back saying what you just said, although even that sometimes is strange. But often, you can kind of figure out what was meant. But if you try and convey anything at all complicated, lost in translation is more likely than not. And if you're trying 21 different languages, they're not all gonna work.
No, they're not. It uses Google Translate on the backend, which tends to be one of the better translation engines. But one of the unique features of Parents Square that, you know, we looked at at least a dozen different platforms before choosing this. But one of the unique features of Parents Square is it does allow for a manual verification of the translation if the sender is familiar with the language.
That works if you have a teacher that happens to speak the language at the family, or at least knows a little of it. But we don't have too many Arabic speakers in the school system.
No, we don't, but at least, you know, most commonly.
And yet, we have Arabic students in the school system. And those families have, at least a few of them, a few of them that I deal with have not been in the country very long either and are having general difficulty just dealing with the culture and the technology and everything. And this could get a little overwhelming unless it works well for them.
Right, but I mean, right now, there's nothing, so it's, it's an improvement over that.
I like the tool, I'm just, I think it would be useful if staff got used to the kinds of statements that will work or are likely to work, and not try and push it to the limits that are unlikely to, you know, at least in the beginning. Get people comfortable with using it, and then if something gets broken in translation, everybody go ha-ha, and then you'll straighten things out.
Right.
So we have a couple of parents that are already using it from the Wyndham Tech school?
Yeah, we did briefly mention that. The Wyndham Technical High School system started using the same platform this year as well. So we already have parents who, like, as soon as we did our initial data upload, it already caught, like, I think it was 40 families that were already in the system, already using it with the tech schools. Locally, East Hampton, Connecticut is also using it, and we had some discussion with their IT director before we chose this platform, and they've been using it for, what was it, like, two years now?
No, they just started in January.
Was it in January? But they have had great success there.
And Hampden, and they have great success too.
Is there anybody else who has any questions? Mark?
You had mentioned that we purchased this program. Again, I don't recall seeing, I don't recall seeing this beforehand, so I'm, obviously you're giving this to me as a fait accompli, but what is the financial obligation we have for this program?
I believe the cost was $4 per year per student, which is comparable to our Blackboard service. Going forward, you know, this year, since we're paying for both services, there is a slight increase, but going forward, this could actually be a cost savings, since we could eliminate Blackboard Connect and possibly, there's two or three other applications we're looking at that we currently use that we might be able to fold into this as well.
So $4 per student, how many students do we have?
The total, the total cost for this first year, which included a $1,500 setup fee, was $14,500.
And that was in the budget that's not yet passed?
It's in the technology budget.
It's in the technology budget.
It's in the technology budget.
That has not yet been approved?
Yeah, but it's in the technology budget.
Well, I'm just, I think it's a fantastic program, but I'm concerned, once again, it's coming to, coming to me as a fait accompli, and you've spent the money, and I don't know where.
Well, we piloting it. We haven't bought this for all students, we're just piloting it.
Well, we already are gonna open it up to second graders if they want to do it, and so it sounds to me like we're pretty much bought into this.
Well, we know, we said we piloted with the middle school. That's where, not all teachers, those teachers that want to use it at the middle school. That was the initial.
And one of the important parts we want to have is we want to have it available as close to the beginning of the school year as possible, because if the teachers are already invested into another platform, like.
Again, I, it's, I've been thinking we should have been on this type of platform a while ago. I'm not objecting to the platform, I'm objecting to the fact that you're presented to me as a fait accompli, and I don't even know it was coming, and we spent $14,000 on a budget that's not approved. It's the, it's the communication train, it's, you know, left the station before I even, before I even knew it was there.
Yes or no? But you approved technology resources, and under that technology money for a different platform, we have that money. So it's approved under that. So, you know, once you approve that money for technology and it's there, the department is free to use it appropriately, appropriately. So you did approve technology and for different programs, and so the department, that's what they do, that's what we do. We look at what are the best program under the parameters of the money that is allowed to us.
I think, I think the point, can I interject here? I think the point that's being made is that we don't have an approved budget, and there are still questions about, once a budget is approved, if it is MBR, will we be able to afford everything we envision? will we be able to afford everything we envisioned in the budget? And so I think the point that's being made, if I could interject here, is that we need to be communicating better about things upfront, that's all. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough dance between what we know we need to do to move forward and, and us being on top of what we are spending. So I don't think anybody's criticizing the program. I just think we're, you're hearing their concern.
I do want to say that I hear your concern, I hear the concern of the board. My staff and I hear your concern. We meet on a regular basis. Actually, today, we met with a high school and a school, looking at all avenues where to make reductions and where to save money. But the bottom line is that the school system still has to run and there are things that need to be done. So I caution the entire board that although I know you're very conservative and I hear you, we have to save money, I don't want us to be in a panic mode because the kids still deserve our education and we cannot go back to the fifteenth century. We have to move forward. So we are very cautious of what we have. We already know how much we need to cut. And we are meeting with every department, looking at every single item of what we can be reduced. And that's not, Dr. Garcia, task only is a very inclusive task. Every principal in this, in the school and every department head is involved. If you take a look at my weekly memo that I sent out last week, we, every department is scheduled and every school. And today, we made some gains of some areas that we thought that we could, could reduce. So we take that very seriously, we hear you, and we take it very seriously.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the presentation?
Thank you guys, great job.
Thank you. And next, we're gonna hear a presentation on teacher recruitment and retention. And who's going to be taking that?
Mrs., the Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Garrett. And I think Mr. Neil Weather just is here and he will jump in as, as needed if there has any question because he's the data guy. So, so teacher retention and recruitment is a, is a topic of conversation and a focus nationwide, not only here in Wyndham, but is in Connecticut and in the country, particularly in urban school district. We say, we see the same patterns across the country. So Mrs. Garrett is going to share with you what we see in the country, what we see in Connecticut and what we saw in Wyndham. And Neil is here in case there's any issues that you need to add with the data.
Before we get started, thank you. Before we get started, and I, I know we're looking forward to seeing this presentation. We, we got it in our packet, but I'm sure people will have questions and thoughts. What I'd like to put on the table, though, for the board to think about as we're listening to this presentation is that we won't be able to give this topic the attention it needs in the context of this one meeting here tonight. And Tracy Lambert and I were at one of the breakout tables when we had the Budget Forum on September seventeenth. And one of the discussion items that came up in that conversation is around teacher retention and recruitment. Perhaps we should be thinking of setting up a working group of representatives from perhaps several different constituencies, including people who have experience in this area, as well as interested parties here in the district, in the community, as well as people who work for the Board of Ed. I just want you to be thinking about that because I, I, you know, I don't think we should be giving this short shrift that this is something that is a challenge and we need to do more work on. And so I don't want people to be disappointed if we don't dig in as much as we might be able to. I'd like us to think about after hearing the presentation whether this is something we, we might want to move forward with so we can give it more ongoing attention to. We look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Stephanie Garrett. And thank you for that. As, I apologize, this was for the, the board retreat and I didn't take it off of there, but I did change the dates and some other things.
You need to hold it.
We can't hear you well. Hello?
Hey, you need to hold it near your mouth.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay. So what this?
You just pulled it away from your mouth.
Okay. Maybe I should use this one? Hello? Okay. All right, so what it, what this report is really is a general overview of nationally of recruitment and retention and how it relates and how it actually aligns with Wyndham. Because as you may not be aware, but hopefully you are aware, that when you're looking at recruitment and retention, it is very important to really look at what the national trends are and how they relate to where we are to make sure that we are in alignment and how it is that we can improve upon what we're doing, what we're doing correct and what it is that we can improve and not to like, to look at everything in a silo. Because nothing is done in a silo, right? So as we go, we will look at where we are.
To the right, Stephanie, to the right.
Okay, thank you. And so as we look at educator retention, our focus is on how school characteristics and, or what educator retention is, is how, and if I go too fast or too slow, you can let me know whether or not I can, to go up or go down. So it's how school characteristics and teacher demographics and how they, how teachers stay in their schools, move to different schools, or how they leave the profession before retirement. And then what are the trends in current teacher retention? The national, which is urban, because we're urban, Connecticut and Wyndham. And to what extent are the trends different in Wyndham compared to national and Connecticut data? And what factors are related to the retention and teacher turnover trends? And then we're going to start with our national data comparisons. So turnover rate comparisons, and, and I'm not sure if you can see it, but you do have your things before everyone else. That's there, that does not have that. The national data, urban data is seventeen point seven for turnover rates. In Connecticut, the national turnover rate is fifty-three point one percent for teachers leaving education or turnover and leaving their districts. And in Wyndham, it is seventeen point five percent. So we are about the same for the national data, but we are lower for Connecticut. And so the certified, the certified teacher retention rates, because we did this for educators over the last eight years. And I just want to give some corrected data. For seventeen eighteen, what you have in your packet, it says eighty-nine point nine percent. That data was not correct. It had to be, there was a typo and yours says eighty-nine point nine percent. It is actually eighty-five point five percent. And the way that we come to, or the way that you were, the way that the retention rate is calculated is that you take who was there at the, at the, at the start of a year, who left, and then you get your retention rate. So it's done for every school and then it's done for the district as a whole. And then that's how you come up with the actual retention rate. So in seventeen eighteen, it was actually eighty-five point five percent. And then in eighteen nineteen, it is eighty-two point five percent. And so for the national data, the community type, so we still compared it with urban districts and not all districts was eighty-two point three percent. And then for free and reduced, which we have seventy-five percent or more, is seventy-eight percent. And the educator experience of people who have four years or less in a high minority rate district in Connecticut is thirty point four percent. And in Wyndham, we have fifty-one point eight five percent with one to five years of service. So why are we looking at this data? Because things that may influence retention nationally is Education Research Center conducted a survey that answered what would make teachers remain in or leave their current jobs? And the top three answers from each group were as follows. They would remain in their positions for salary, school climate and level of, level of autonomy. And school climate was the experience that professionals experienced in their school. And they would leave also for salary, school climate and leadership. And then there were other things that you have in your, in your brochures or in your packet that will tell you what they were. And then leaving, there were other reasons why. And in Wyndham, when I looked at the exit interviews, we were not far from what the actual national data was. And that was salary, distance, school leadership and climate. And how are we changing? We are looking at updating the salary schedule because actually what I am finding, when people are coming to Wyndham, we start at step three. So when they come to me and they say, well, you are lower than every single place that I go because step three in Talon may be at fifty-three or it may be at sixty thousand. Well, we are actually higher than their step one, but step three for us is forty-three thousand dollars. Where step one in Talon may actually be.
Forty-six or fifty.
Or yeah, maybe forty-six. So we really are not step, it's really not a step three for us, it's really our step one. So the perception of where we are and the perception of where, or where everyone else is really isn't equitable because our salary schedule says three where everyone else says one. So we're looking at maybe, or I want to look at maybe changing our step three to what it really is, which is step one. Because we remove steps versus changing what our actual salary schedule is. And then there's nothing that we could really do for distance, but there's some other suggestions that we have. And then school leadership, we are updating a more effective and efficient coaching model that has been implemented for our administrators. And then we have some other recommendations for our climate that are made in the recommendation section. And then for salary and job satisfaction, studies show that fifty-five percent of teachers said they are not satisfied with the teaching salary, according to data from fifteen sixteen, which is the most recent salary data that has, that is available. And then the average public school teacher salary for sixteen seventeen was fifty-nine thousand, according to data from the National Education Survey. And eighteen, in seventeen eighteen school year, it was sixty thousand. And teachers who are not satisfied with their paychecks are more likely to say their enthusiasm is waning and they consider leaving the profession for a higher-paying job and the stress and disappointments of teaching aren't really worth it. So for average teacher salary, the average teacher salary in Connecticut is seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirteen thousand, which ranks fifth among US states. And that was in seventeen eighteen. And this was published in May two thousand and nineteen. However, Wyndham's teacher average salary for nineteen twenty currently stands at sixty-four thousand and I pulled that out of Munis on September fourth, two thousand and nineteen. And that's in two thousand and nineteen currently. And the average teaching salary nationally, it was thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine thousand in two thousand and seventeen. In Connecticut in two thousand and seventeen, it was forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. And for us, in two thousand and nineteen twenty, we are still at forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. So we are still lower in two thousand and nineteen twenty on average than Connecticut was in two thousand and seventeen eighteen and the national average in two thousand and seventeen eighteen. So then we have the cost association with turnover. It can lead to an inequitable distribution of teachers between districts and within districts. As we see when we provide our professional development, then we have other districts who say, well, we know that Wyndham provides great professional development to their educators. So what we're going to do is we're going to let them pay a lower salary, teach their people and provide them with great professional development. And because we pay them at a higher rate from two thousand and seventeen and they're paying them less than what we paid them in two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen twenty, and then we're going to take them because we, they trained them very well. So we're going to let them do all the work and then we're going to take them to our district. And that's what they're doing. And they're doing it openly because this is what I'm told.
Statistics are funny things. The Connecticut average includes Darien, Greenwich and the suburbs surrounding New York City. So the east of the river really does make a difference. If you just look at the cost of living statistics for the state of Connecticut, it's vastly less expensive to live in eastern Connecticut than to live in western Connecticut.
I agree, but I can.
So the salary comparisons that really matter to us are the salaries that are available in surrounding school districts. Because a lot of our experienced teachers will leave for a higher salary in Lebanon or Franklin or Chaplain or Talon because they don't have to move. They just change the direction of their commute and maybe they have to drive five miles further.
And those towns are still paying more than what we are.
I know that, but those are the real comparisons that we need to be looking at, not the state averages.
And I can still get you those numbers, but those numbers are still higher than what we're paying. And we are still providing the professional development and they are still taking our educators.
I know that's happening.
And we're still taking the money.
And we've looked at those numbers before, but to really understand what's happening, we need to look at who we're competing with, both in terms of professional development and the salary difference. Because when we say we need to try and close that gap, we're not trying to close the gap with the state. We're trying to close the gap particularly with our better and experienced teachers.
But we've had.
With what the surrounding communities are paying.
But you're not necessarily only competing. We're not only competing with the surrounding states or the surrounding areas. Because I came from Norwalk. We have other people who are traveling to New London. We have people who are traveling to those places. So I understand what you're saying, that they're traveling, some people are traveling to those areas, but not all are traveling to those places. So we can maybe look and see and we can put on the exit interview, where are you going? We can do that. And maybe we can begin to get those numbers in because we don't know where they're going. But not everyone is going just around because some people are willing to travel for an extra twenty-five thousand dollars. Some people are willing to travel for an extra thirty-five thousand dollars if they want to go to the Gold Coast, right? If you're going to make an extra twenty-five thousand dollars, who wouldn't travel? I mean, you don't know what their circumstances are. So we really don't know who we're competing with. But it's worth actually putting on the exit interview to ask, will you, will you be willing to let me know where you're going? So we can really get a true picture of who it is that we're competing with.
Elda, and then Mike, do you have a question? Elda first, go ahead, Elda.
Maybe you could think about it.
I'm freezing it.
The question is, now, we know our salaries are low, but what can we do about it?
That's something that will.
It's our salary.
That's something that maybe like when Ida said, that's something that we need to come together and collaborate with. Because I can tell you, I don't have the answer. I don't. I really don't have the answer.
You need a higher budget.
Contracts and the budget.
I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't have all of the answers. It's something that we have to collaborate and come up with. I'm not going to say that we need to raise our salaries by twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't know because we do provide professional development. There are other things that can be done. I do know that the salary needs to be raised, but am I saying it needs to be raised by twenty-five thousand dollars? I don't know that. I can't give you, I, I can't give you the, the holy grail of what it is we need to do. There is something that needs to be done.
So what is the value on the professional development?
That's what we need to sit down and collaborate about because I don't know.
No, you can't do.
No, you can't stop. You can't stop.
No, they can't stop doing that.
You can't stop doing that, no.
Mike, did you have a question?
Well, when you're talking twenty-five thousand dollar increases, thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollar increases, the answer is not what will our budget sustain? Because the answer is more, the economic development in this area needs to, we need economic development. So to, to just simply say our teachers need the twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars more is just, you're, you're, you're looking at, you're looking at it the wrong direction.
Agreed.
Because town can't afford twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. And there's a lot of retention that we need in the, you know, in the, in the district. You know, we've got, you know, directors, department directors, I, you know, IT, weather, whatever. You know, you've got all kind of departments that we're looking at retention. We may have some other departments that we've, that are too heavy.
There are a lot of issues.
There's a lot of issues to look at. I, I don't think.
And what I will say to you.
Going at a twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar increase for teachers at this point, that's not the, we should be looking at. We should be looking at more realistic goals and where we can save and get more money to the classrooms.
And what I would challenge you on, on the whole department thing is maybe looking at things holistically because to say where you're top-heavy in a department, what I will say to you is looking at everything holistically. Because to make a blanket statement of maybe other departments are heavy, I would look at the study of, I don't know, maybe look at where you work at and see what your, I mean, take for example, human, I will put myself out there and say, human resources. I'm underpaid as a human resources person, but I'm here because this is where I want to be, right? So, and I have three people in the department, there used to be four, there's three. I'm understaffed because one point eight, because in a department or a place such as Wyndham, when you have three thousand students, it's one point eight people that are just for recruit. I'm understaffed, because one point eight, because in a department or a place such as Wyndham, when you have three thousand, um, students, is one point eight people that are just for recruitment. We have no one for recruitment. And I'm- and as everyone knows, I make one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and there's no one for recruitment. I do labor relations, I do human resources, workers' compensation, two secretaries, we are severely understaffed. And people here would say that I am overpaid, I am not. Where I was at before was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they offered me a hundred and seventy-five to stay, but I didn't. And I am severely understaffed, and everyone here would probably say I am overpaid, right? But I'm not. So, what I would challenge you to do is look at what the averages are, and I'm not asking for anything else. So, to make a blanket statement like that, I would say holistically, look, before we make those type of statements, is to look at really what those averages are, right? Because it's easy to say that, but it's harder to look and deep- and dig deep down and say, "Really, what is it?" Because we want to believe that those numbers are high, but are they really?
Okay, I think, I- yeah, we-
Can we look at pre Adamowski numbers, positions, and then, um-
We have those.
Well, I- I- I do- I do want to go back to, I think we need to get some issues out on the table tonight, but I don't think we're gonna be able to have a full discussion. Because we don't have all the data in front of us, there are a lot of questions that people have. We're gonna need to figure out a way to continue this discussion.
Right.
Right, uh, 'cause it's a hard work. We have two other people up before you, Murph, Mary and then Tracy and Jaime, oh, now Jaime hasn't had a chance to go, then you, Murph, because you already had a chance to go.
You know, it's okay, I can go last.
No, no, Mary, Tracy, Jaime, Murphy.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, for the presentation, I ju- I just wanted to point out-
You still have more to go.
Yeah, um, thus far, um, just, this conversation about twenty-five thousand dollar increases, um, I- I don't, you know, just looking at the average beginning teacher's salary. The difference is, you know, three to four initially, and I know that it stagnates here. So, I- I do think it increases and that the- but no one's saying, "Add twenty-five thousand dollars to all the teacher's salaries." Um, just- just because that's what it sounded like that last comment was. Um, I- I do want to say, looking at it kind of, um, from a slightly different angle of turnover, can make some of the numbers, um, that's sort of the way I approached it on, um, in a kind of layperson's way, because, um, you know, the figure of fourteen teachers, uh, leaving the high school, for example, where there's approximately thirty-nine teachers. That's something like thirty percent, uh, turnover, which is very disturbing.
No, the high schools have much more than thirty-nine teachers.
Okay, um, how many do they have, I mean, so?
The high school have a fifty-five.
Well, fourteen left last year, I- and I- the thing is, the other way of sometimes the measure of turnover or retention takes into consideration, you know, X-
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I- I just still think it's unacceptable, the level, um, of- of turnover. Where sometimes you're looking at how many are on the first day of school, how many are on the last day of school, and it's not the, also the kind of churn going on during the year.
Right, that's holistic, it's holistic. When I say it's holistic, it's actually going all the way around, it's big from the beginning, and people who leave, and then you hire, and leave and hire. So, it's actually going around in the entire circle and-
So, sixty-four teachers leaving last year out of the total is-
Well, some was- some were left, some hired, some left, some hired, so then you just go all around. And then, she's looking at who came in, who came out, who came in, who came out, and so then, it gets around to June. And then, it was a total of sixty-four that left and came throughout, or it was a total of seventeen that came and left throughout the year.
Right, and so, you corrected the number that we had in our pack that said eighty-nine percent.
Right, and it was- it was eighty-five point five percent retention.
It was eighty-two point something percent.
Yeah, I- I- I'm confused about the numbers, but-
For seventeen eighteen.
But we have discussed this over many years, and I think that it's not really enough to, and I'm- I'm not talking about your position and your study, I'm just talking about the district. You know, it's just constantly digesting this, or- or, you know, turning it over every couple of years and- and saying, "Well, it's because we're urban," or bec- you know, that, to me, is becoming an intolerable response. So, I do think we need a plan, um, for approaching this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, now, uh, Tracy-
Her presentation, I think.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has something more pressing right now.
Is something burning, or can people let Ms. Garrett go through her presentation?
No, she can go through the presentation.
Okay. Good suggestion, Tracy.
What do we hear?
Seems like you're going back to the beginning.
I'm going backwards.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, the turnover, so we went to, so isn't the turnover-
Can you hold the mic up a little?
I'm sorry, the possible effects for, um, the turnover is that it can lead to an inequitable distribution of teachers between- teachers between districts and within districts. And then, low-income minority students may be more likely to be taught by inexperienced, out-of-field, and/or emergency credentialed teachers. And it can also perpetuate achievement gaps. And then, also what I want to say about that is, even though we do have the rate of turnovers that we have, because of the professional development and things that we have, even though we are not, um, at the top of the achievement gap, we are really making success with our S-PAC scores, um, even with the challenges that we do have. And so, the cost to school districts is, um, the cost in administration, is that our instability in the workforce, our lack of opportunity, or our continuity in instruction, loss of the highest quality teachers, our time and energy to recruit and train new teachers. And then, the fiscal cost to districts is the recruitment, replacement, and training. And one study, um, just when you look at Chicago, the turnover in schools, it cost them thirty-five million dollars, and it can, and in New York City alone, it was one hundred and ten to two hundred and six million dollars. And then, here in Wyndham, when you put in, this is an actual thing that you can go to, um, for the sixty-four teachers, it actually costs, um, the estimated cost of the turnover, um, is one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And if we cut that in half, it would save us, um, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then, for educator recruitment, ensuring nationally what the shortage areas are, you can see here, it would be in language arts, um, of course, science, social studies, um, special ed, rural languages. And this is all over, because even on CT REIT right now, there's over two hundred and seventy open positions for educators in Connecticut alone. So, there is a shortage of educators everywhere, not just in Wyndham. And we were able to fill all of our positions with just one that we're still looking for right now. And then, our shortages are special education, math, science, which we fill, ELL, bilingual, which is all subject areas. And then, our recruiting insights, which I have to move up, is that an average school district has one point eight assigned to recruitment with a student population of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. And then, fewer than half of districts traveled to colleges and universities to recruit at job fairs and other events. Among districts that travel, only twenty-two percent travel outside of the state in which the district is located. School districts do not provide new teachers with substantive mentoring or onboarding opportunities to build new skills crucial to their roles. School districts do not compensate teachers similarly to college-educated professionals in other fields, or provide teachers with the resources they need to do their jobs well. And almost twenty percent of districts do not provide even the most basic formal district-sponsored induction programs for beginning teachers. And suggestions would be to develop climate surveys to distribute at the beginning and end of school years to find out what our teachers feel that they need. Look at targeting educators who prefer to work part-time, i.e. new teachers, retired educators, to create shared classrooms. Collaborate with EUCON to provide reduced childcare services for Wyndham employees, for the convenience of pickup and drop-off routines for better quality of life, um, and early education options. Develop comprehensive year-long induction programs for new and newly hired educators and/or other employees to increase retention, effectiveness, and understanding the cultural relevance in education. And then, purchase an HRIS system to integrate with Munis to provide data entry, tracking, and information needs of human resources in order to increase recruiting opportunities instead of getting another HR person, and that's like fifteen thousand dollars versus getting a whole nother person that would cost a district maybe about seventy-five thousand dollars, so, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
We have a few more questions or comments, we have Tracy, then Jaime, then Murphy.
Um, a few observations, one, I would like to request that we get emailed this packet that we received, the- the presentation you did tonight, as opposed to the five or six pages that were actually in our packet.
Okay.
Because there's a lot more information here, and those last few things that you read to us, I couldn't see them from here. So, um, I'd like to have that, so I can actually peruse it, and then maybe I'll come up with more questions.
Okay.
The second thing, we used to have a personnel committee, in the good old days, before Dr. Adamowski, um, there was a personnel committee, and they looked at this data and made presentations to the board, the chair of the committee, that kind of stuff. Um, something I'd like us to think about as a board going forward, um, you know, they kind of get the data, and then if they start seeing something troubling, they ask to be put on the agenda, or during their committee reports, you know, they say, "We're looking at data on blah, 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 blah."
It was a personnel committee of-
Personnel committee, of the Board of Ed. Dr. Adamowski came into-
That could be something the next Board of Ed could consider.
Six or seven committees, and narrowed them down to two or three, so that, it's just an FYI. Um, this is just looking at certified teachers, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
It was just certified teachers.
Right, we're not looking at paras, people that weren't replaced.
That you want us to.
Right, well, I mean, those kind of people contribute to the well-being of the teachers as well. If you have inadequate support staff in your building, or inadequate support staff in your classroom, that leads to the climate. Um, what about admin, did we look at admin? I know it's not part of the-
I only did the certify, I just dis-certified.
Okay.
We do have- we do have the retention rate of-
And then, the last thing I have to say is that for twenty, thirty years now, our teachers in Wyndham have been working for less. And not all that long ago, there were multiple people who were getting awards every year at convocation for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years of service to the district. And at some point, it's time for people to retire and new blood to come in. But the fact that we're losing that longevity, I don't think can be completely related to salary, as opposed to building climate and- and other things that go into it. And part of that is our budget as well, um, some of our PD that's given isn't necessary, and sometimes we have perfectly qualified people in district to give PD that don't, or aren't asked to, or aren't allowed to. Um, and we pay outside consultants to do those things. So, maybe one of the cost-saving measures we need to look at as a board is looking within our buildings, who can possibly, you know, help to give some of that PD. Um, they're all certified teachers, they can help each other. Um, and the coaching model you were talking about, I'm not sure the coaching model is working here in the district. I mean, we had, just in this week's packet, we had a few more coaches resign, um, and we've had, you know, we've narrowed down that. Maybe it's time that we abandon a coaching model and look at something different, um, as a board, as- as a district, instead of the coaching model. We've been doing it for four or five years now, and I'm not sure, and I don't know, but it's something we can look at. Not sure we're seeing the coaching model being as effective as we're hoping it is for the dollars.
So, we does- we does redesign the coaching model, we reframe it, so it's not the coaching model that was here three years ago. It has been reframed, and it has been- has been reduced. So, the one that in existence this year, just started this year.
I am aware.
And the feedback that we are receiving from the schools and from the coaching is that is really much more positive. The coaches are in schools, and they're in schools four days a week, working with teachers. But I do want to address that, um, that four- three years ago, four years ago, we developed, we created a teacher recruitment and retention committee that was, uh, composed by members of the community, the Dean of Education of UConn, the Dean of Education of Eastern, people from commerce, parents, uh, remember Mr. Garvey from Nacho, different parents, uh, people from the business world. Uh, so it was not, we didn't have anyone from the school per se, and the community people from outside. And they gave us some suggestion and presented to the board, and we have done some of those things that are there, that plan that they gave us. One other thing was to grow our own, and we have done that in small scales. We have people that are paras, so tutors, that we are sending to the Relay Graduate School of Education to become teachers. Every year, we send two, or we want to send more than two or three. Um, the other thing that we have done is that we have two group of, two different group of teachers, the first cohort just graduated from UConn. And all of those teachers stay with us, that are part of the teacher leadership group, and this is a program with UConn for three years, and those teachers all are here. The other group is the Leadership Equity Group of Teachers with a grant with NALIMAN, those teachers are here. So, we provide different opportunity for teachers. I think the question that we need to ask is, what age group, how many years is, uh, what age group, length of time are the teachers leaving? And you will say, "It's not the teachers that are being here twenty years, or the teachers that have been here fifteen." The teachers that are leaving are more in the year of three to four, not the teachers that have been here fifteen, eleven, or twenty years. One of the issues that we do have is recruitment also. And when I say recruitment, is that it's very known by research and by everyone, that not all teachers are equipped to function in environment, where you require strong differentiation, where you require understanding a different culture, where you're understanding urban kids, understanding the mindset. So, we, I agree that we need to do a better job of recruiting people that share our mindset and share our belief, because sometimes teachers come, and if they don't share their belief system or that mindset, the classroom can become a very scary- scary place for them.
Jaime?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna speak on behalf, or maybe raise, you know, what, Ms. Christine DeGray, she sent an email today, and she took the time to go through the whole document, and she came out with some questions that I think deserve to be answered. So, I would just recommend and advise that at some point, you answer her, respond to her, and maybe, when we have some more time, bring those questions to, for us for discussion. They are very good. And as I- as I said, she took the time to go through all the document, and posed very, you know, good questions.
Okay.
Thus-
Yeah. We- we- we, I don't know whether you've seen them, we were-
I haven't seen them.
We received them sometime this afternoon, so it was only-
Just forward them on to Dr. Marson.
Yeah, we will forward them on, they were sent to the board.
Three thirty-one PM.
Yeah, so, it wouldn't have been time for us to do much to respond this evening, but something worth looking into. Thank you. Murphy?
Yes.
Um, okay, first I want to agree in general with Mr. DeSagne that whatever adjustments might be made in salary rates, adjusting salaries alone is not going to solve the problem. It's- it's a community problem, not just, you just can't push one button. Uh, in fact, part of the problem, part of the complexity that we've got here is that the state has actually added about, what, two and a half million dollars in alliance money, is that where we are at these days?
No, not that many, I would love to have two million dollars.
Well, there's- there's a substantial amount of alliance money. The problem with the alliance money is that the state doesn't let us spend it on what we need to spend it on, they tell us what to spend it on. Now, what they tell us to spend a lot of it on is PD, and it's not that the PD is a bad idea, but the thought, the problem is, is that when we spend a lot of money on PD, it's good for the teachers that get the PD, but it creates this other problem that you just outlined. We now have teachers that are attractive to other districts where the state didn't spend money to give their teachers PD, so they hire them away from us. And they turn us into a farm system for, uh, for other districts. And so, the, this, for all of the good intention of the, uh, of the alliance money, uh, some of it's being frittered away, uh, because it's not actually staying in, the- the result is not actually staying in the district. And so, we- we really need to look at the whole problem here, what, you know, and- and maybe work with the legislature to point out to them that the- that the difficulty in telling us how to spend the money is that they- they don't actually get the result that they wanted to get, because they create a hole somewhere else in our budget. And I think that in terms of affordability, one of the problems that you have is that, one of the reasons that this community has so much difficulty affording anything, is that it fails to invest in things. There's a differ- difference between an expenditure and buying something, sometimes you have to, I mean, you have to take out the garbage, and you have to push the snow off the streets, but those are not investments, those are expenditures. But investing in- in schoolchildren is an investment, and we already know that if children graduate from high school and become taxpayers, they're a lot worth, a lot more to the community in general, and this community in particular, than if they don't graduate from high school. And if they don't graduate from high school, there's a higher probability that they become welfare recipients, or, uh, in the penal system somewhere, and end up turning into a social cost rather than a social asset. So until we decide to not only in, to invest in the community, as well as invest in the school budgets, we're not going to solve the problem. It's not just a simple thing of saying, "Oh, we need to pay our teachers more." We do need to pay our teachers more, but we need to do a lot of other things.
Are there any other points that people would like to raise? If not, I would like to, there have been a couple suggestions that have made, been made tonight, and a bunch of other questions put out on the table about more information that we need to get. The issue is that this board only has one other regularly scheduled meeting before the upcoming elections. So I don't really know what's going to happen on November fifth, and what the composition of the board will be. One thing that the incoming board could consider is revamping of committees, and doing something like setting up an ongoing Personnel Committee, as, as was suggested by Tracy. Another thing we could begin working on before November is constituting some sort of a working group to shepherd the task of, of getting, continuing to get information, continuing, making sure this discussion continues. I don't know what the board prefers at this point, but I'm just pointing it out to you all. Any thoughts? Which sounds like a great idea?
Getting some.
A working group?
A working group together to make these decisions.
Well, or to get the information.
Get the information.
Because the board would make.
To get the information and do something.
Make recommendations, or whatever, yeah. Any other thoughts, or anybody concur with that?
I, I think you're correct that we have an obligation to understand what's going on. We also have to be careful that, one of the ways that, one of the things that led to Dr. Adamowski was micromanaging the school district. We're here to develop policy, we're not here to tell you how to run the school district. We don't have the expertise to run a school district. We do have, you know, some capacity for gathering information, evaluating, evaluating information, and, and, and laying out policies, you know, laying out the boundaries of, you can spend this much, you can go this far. But in terms of what you actually do, that's, that's something that the staff has got to be able to figure out.
Well, but I don't think anybody's saying by setting up a working group that you're circumventing the staff.
I'm not talking about a working group, that's fine.
Okay.
The idea of, quote, "A Personnel Committee" bothers me a bit.
Well, that's something that we can't, we shouldn't be deciding here tonight, because we don't know what the next board is going to be.
Yes, okay.
Do people like the idea of a working group at all? Yes, no, or, I mean, how else do you, if, if you don't think that's a good idea, how else do you propose we keep this discussion going? I mean, we could keep it discussion going at the full board level, too. But we'd have to make the time to do that properly.
We do need a working group, because we do need to figure out, why can't we keep the teachers here? And minority retention, that's very low. Why can't, why can't we find minority teachers that are graduating from Eastern and UConn?
But they're known.
Our minority teachers.
Minority teachers. But it is an issue, minority recruitment and retention.
I will suggest that Mrs. Chair, if not, there's still the survey that that committee gave to teachers around here. Mrs. Christine DeGray is a result of that recommendation. She's attending the Relay Graduate School of Education to become a teacher, right? And last year, we graduated two more, and then there's another one. So we still, I think, in HR, have the result from that committee that I said. It was not composed of members of the staff, it was composed of members of the community.
Do you want to share those recommendations with us again?
Share those recommendations?
Yeah.
A worship.
Yeah, and so, it could be those beginning, I mean, those, that would be information.
We don't need to make a decision tonight, but.
And I can share with Dr. Garcia some other, I mean, I can share with some other ideas that I have with her, that maybe she could, she could, I will run them by her, and she can run them by you, that maybe may work for some board members. And see, I don't know, I don't want to say them now, because I don't know if they're appropriate, right?
So let's leave it for that time.
I can run them by her.
Well, plus, we have a lot of other business tonight, so we, we need to keep moving. But, okay, so what I'm understanding from this conversation is we will get some, the recommendations that were from the previous group.
Couple years ago group, yeah.
We will hear some other ideas from, from staff. Board members have requested more information in a few areas, and not the least of which is getting the presentation that was presented to us tonight. Mike?
Well, listening to, to a couple things. I understand what Murphy's saying about micromanagement. But also, this board took a major, major turn from being involved in everything, in every aspect of the district, to almost not even, not even knowing what's going on. When you, when you, from the time out, you know, Dr. Adamowski left till now, if you go back and you just review our meetings, half the board doesn't even know what's going on, on the, with the, with the school system. They don't even know what's going on, they don't read packets. They're not, never mind are they involved with the, with decisions or policymaking, but they don't even know what's on the packet. If you took their packet away at the meeting, they have no clue. And they, they haven't read them before the meetings. We're seeing, we see stuff like this, and, and, you know, you can pick up, okay, hey, that, I didn't read that. So you know there's certain things that, that we're missing out, but. So you, you've got to get back to the point where there's some involvement, the committees, this, you know, and the subcommittees and all that. But you can't micromanage, you have to make policy, and then you have to see to it that the policies are, are being taken care of.
Thank you. Anything else? We're going to move on then. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, I know you're pretty new in the system, so. We appreciate you taking the time to put this forward tonight, thanks. Professional development?
Not going to spare more time, but it's in your pocket. Of course, one of the things that we do as a learning organization, because we are a learning organization, not only students are learning, teachers are learning, administrators are learning, all of us are learning, is that we build capacity through professional development. And so on the fifteenth of October, I'm not going to go over the schedule, there is a schedule there, a professional development for the entire district. That is a combination of both in-house personnel and also some outside personnel. But we are using in-house personnel and also outside personnel. For example, in-house personnel, we have Dr. Mudambi, that, Mr., Mr. Weathers, Mr. Miguel Pabon, and Mrs. Youngberg, Dr. Youngberg, and we have a combination of teachers also. So it's a combination of in-house, external, all together, to continue the business of learning. And all of us will be learning, not only the students, but the teachers also. I'm not going to go over it, it's in the packet, so.
Right. If people have any questions, they can follow up with you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now we're on to committee reports. Finance and Audit Committee is up first.
Okay, we met last week, we're, we're now meeting the week before the board meeting. And I hope the minutes got into the, on the web, on the website, so that you, you can see them. At any rate, we have a set of transfer requests that are in the form of a motion that are in the packet, that we'll take up later in the meeting, so I'll skip that until we get to that. The other big component of the meeting last week was, in anticipating that we're going to have to live within the MBR, that really means that we have to take last year's budget, which is a combination of the eighteen, nineteen budget, and, and what we actually spent in eighteen, nineteen, because as we went through the year, things, adjustments were made, all right? And we need to build the budget for nineteen, twenty, that starts with how much we had in eighteen, nineteen, and then gets us to the same total for nineteen, twenty. And the problem, of course, is that we have some increases that we know we're going to have to live with. The number that we had last week, and we'll get a better picture of that at the next meeting. But employees did get a raise this year, so they, and then some people left, and the people that we hired are, on average, being paid less than the people that, that left. So the, the actual increase is about eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, okay? Over last year's compensation for, for employees. The healthcare benefits, I think the number that she gave me was two-point-seven million.
Two-point-seven.
Yeah, that's an increase over, over last year. That's, that's to cover not only the, the anticipated increased costs of healthcare, but also the, making sure that, in fact, we end up with a contribution to the reserve fund this year. So our budget basically is two, two-point-seven million dollars. So if we add two-point-seven million dollars, we're going to get, we've got to squeeze it back out someplace else, basically. Transportation, the transportation contract's going to add.
Fifty-five, fifty-five thousand.
You said a hundred-and-six thousand.
No, a hundred-and-six is what it, what is already in the budget increase, what the four percent. Remember, we added three percent increase? We added three percent.
So.
But it came at four percent.
So fifty-five thousand.
Would be the additional one percent.
In addition to what's already in the budget.
Okay, so, all right, so, well, that's, fifty-five is better than a hundred-and-six, that's, all right. Nevertheless, we're, we've, and the superintendent has already made some, proposed some reductions, and, and, but we, we need about another five-hundred-thousand dollars when you get down to it. And to get that five-hundred-thousand dollars is going to require personnel decisions. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we'll have to lay somebody off, because we have some unfilled, non-certified, non-teaching positions. And the superintendent and her staff are currently going through all of the unfilled, non-teaching positions, and asking essentially the question about, so what would happen if we went through the year without filling that position? In some cases, that really wouldn't be a bad, it wouldn't be a good idea. You know, there's some positions that you really have to have filled. And other positions that, well, maybe you can get through the year, or most of the year, without, without filling the position. So they're basically going through all the positions, looking at what we can defer. And we'll see how much that adds up to. It may or may not cover the five-hundred-thousand, so. But what the objective for the Finance and Audit Committees is over the next couple of meetings is going to be to get a nineteen, twenty budget together as quickly as possible, so that we, so that we know what we can afford, even whether it passes mark or not, and, and we really need it to pass on December third. But at least we, we know that we can't overspend it.
The MBR, yeah.
So we have to make sure that, that whatever we do decide to spend is not going to end up breaking the bank on, on, and, and we have some contractual commitments to healthcare, and the employees, and the transportation that we have to spend. So we have to make sure that other ways, we, we find ways of saving money. And that means that we're going to have to go through, basically, the entire budget line by line, and ask questions like, "Do we really have to spend that much?" And, and so the, the, the committee recommended a motion that is also on the agenda to be considered later that we'll take up, that essentially, basically asks that every purchase order be reviewed up, up to the superintendent level before it's acted on. Yes, sir.
So my question would be, what's the amount of that, of that two-point-seven million? What amount, what part of that is a repay from what was taken last year? Also, what, what did we operate on? Or did we actually operate using budget money that was budgeted for positions that weren't filled last year to run? In other words, did we do the same thing last year with positions that were never filled? Did we take that money and use that to operate on in the past?
That's, all right, well, we, we didn't. But it necessarily, it might have been done. Actually, one of the things that we know does hap, has happened in previous years is that there's been more, that there was more money in the, in the, in the budget for compensation than we were actually encumbering for compensation, that is, that we were actually paying out. And the surplus was most often transferred to the transportation budget, where we had consistently not put in enough money to actually pay the contract. So yes, money had been moved from compensation, all right, so there was money moved around within the budget. We never moved money around for healthcare, because we never had access to the funds.
Right. So, so my concern would be that even if we didn't.
But back to your question, before you ask the next part of it. You asked if any of that two-point-seven million that's in this year's, this year's budget is to repay any of the past health reserve?
Right.
No, it isn't. We haven't been asked to do that.
Right, so now my concern is, even if we don't fill the positions and we leave them vacant, is that money actually already spoken for?
No.
Okay.
So.
Well, no, I mean, what's spoken for is, is we have a budget that's forty-seven million dollars and whatever change that is, it's forty-seven million and a few, a few thousand dollars more. And we have to, we have to come in on that number or less.
Less.
So everything we spend has to add up to forty-seven million, whatever that is. It's not a question of whether, I mean, the money doesn't, it's a budget, it's a forecast of expenditures. It isn't money that exists or doesn't exist. It's what you can actually spend before you hit the, hit the spending limit. And we have to make sure that we don't overspend in one category, and then not have enough money to pay a bill that we have to pay in some other category. Because there's some bills that we have to pay. We have to pay the salaries. We have to pay for the healthcare, and we have to pay for contracts like transportation.
When is the next meeting?
Next meeting is, could be next Wednesday.
It can't be at the usual time, though, I don't think, because of the Board of Finance public hearing on the budget is at six-thirty.
Okay, well.
Or six PM.
We'll, we'll talk about that, because I'm, I'm not going to be here, Mark is going to end up chairing. I haven't, I haven't spoken to Mark.
So.
Mark is going to chair the next meeting.
Will you, will you confer after this meeting and let us know when the next meeting is, so we can get it out to the folks? Because there's a lot of important stuff being discussed at these meetings, and it's important that we keep on top of it. Thank you. Mark?
Just, just to add in, perhaps goes without saying, but we need to make these decisions much sooner than, than later, because I don't know how we're going to do five-hundred-thousand without making some cuts in, in personnel. And the longer we go, the less you, we can, the more we've spent, if you will, so that means more cuts. So the sooner we make these decisions, I think it's going to be better off for, for us, and better, certainly better off for the system, once we decide what staff we're losing, and how that affects the classrooms. So we really need to get some answers quickly on this.
To that point, I know, Dr. Garcia, you said that you're meeting with the administrators and.
Every department.
And all the department folks, and trying to figure this out. Do you think there could be some recommendations brought forth? For next week, for when that committee meets?
I will try my best. I know we're still meeting with some people Friday.
Or at least some preliminary, yeah.
Try my best.
Thank you. Anything else on finance and audit? Thank you. School planning and design, Tracy?
We had a more robust meeting than I think we intended to last week. Ms. Tamaco's been great about getting us information, myself, Mary, and Dawn. And Mike were at the meeting last Thursday. We talked about the pool, getting it opened again, what those possibilities were. We're looking at substantial amounts of money to get the pool up and running again, not just the impeller, which bids were nine thousand dollars, in that, between eight and nine thousand dollars. Plus, there's a cost of filling it with water, and the startup chemicals, and stuff like that. And while we'd like to keep this on the radar, we realize that, you know, teachers in classrooms and things like that are more important. The one question that did come up, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you, we've been playing phone tag this week, but I'd like permission to talk to the AD and the interim AD about what the transportation costs are costing, are, are adding into the budget, moving the kids to and from pools and stuff like that, because currently, the swim team, the girls' swim team swims in the fall. They're swimming at the Kramer Pool. But that's not a regulation-sized pool, so when they have to go to swim meets, all their swim meets are away. There are no home swim meets. Also, Dawn had looked into Eastern, like what they, what they charge for rental and stuff like that. I'm wondering if anyone's looked into Eastern for our home pool designation, if we can make some kind of agreement with Eastern, pay some kind of fee or something like that, because we do have. because we do have other schools that pay us to use our, our pool for co-op. Um, the girls' team in the fall uses, has Lyman as part of their co-op, and the boys' team in the winter has Ram and Coventry who swim with them. Um, and there's a fee, you know, that, that we charge them to have, um, use of our coach in our pool and stuff like that, if we can kind of roll that into what might be happening and spend some of that at Eastern, so we do have a home pool once in a while. I thought that might be a good idea, so, um, I'm going to reach out to them, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it before I do it.
Is everybody fine with that?
Just to find out what the numbers are.
Just to find out what the options are.
Yeah, we're not, we're not putting anything out, we're not saying we are definitely going to Eastern for, just to find out what the options are and what we're spending extra in transportation, because half the swim meets are usually at home, and when we have to go to travel for all of them, that's gonna add a little bit to the transportation budget for athletics, so, and we're still paying the coaches and stuff like that. Letters were repeatedly, another item on the, um, thing we talked about, the agenda we talked about, letters have repeatedly been sent to Deep with little or halting response from what Ms. Tamako's could come across. So, um, I am, I asked Lynn today if it was okay if I started a conversation with the town manager about, um, forming building committees to start removing the two oil tanks, Wyndham Center and North Wyndham, that were included in last year's capital, um, improvement plan. I'm aware that the other two had, were not approved because this year's capital improvement plan hasn't been done, but because the deep deadline has come and gone now, and I really think it's, you know, imperative that we get this stuff moving, so I'm gonna ask, talk to, um, Jim Rivers as soon as I can get a meeting with him. Um, we have quotes from Environmental Services, a company called Environmental Services, and they range, um, anywhere from eight thousand three hundred and fifty for the three smaller oil tanks to, um, ten thousand two hundred dollars to, for the larger oil tank, and that's just for removal, that's not for site abatement or installation. The two Wyndham schools need to have new tanks installed. The two city schools, Sweeney and Natchog, have been transferred over to gas because the pipelines exist in the city, and they do not out in the Wyndhams. And we looked at, um, what it would cost to hook up the two Wyndham schools to gas, and it was financially crippling, um, so we elected not to do that and just replace the oil tanks. And then, we got some building updates, um, things that are needed, the floor in the North Wyndham School portable classroom is getting a bit spongy, and there are concerns there about what's going on, and that was also in last year's approved capital improvement plan. So, those are conversations that are gonna be, um, ongoing. Ms. Tamako's has been looking at, um, testing all of the heating systems and stuff like that to make sure that things run as they need to now that we're coming into the colder weather, and try to be a little bit proactive on that, then reactive when we have kids wearing jackets in school and stuff like that. So, I think it was a good meeting. I don't know if anyone has anything they wanted to add, but, um, but I think it was a good meeting, we had a lot of information, and there's some progress that we need to start making now, so we're gonna go forward with that.
Any questions? Yes?
I have two questions that, which may not even be for, for Tracy, but I have two observations or questions. One is the swimming, um, and, and I dearly love swimming, I grew up in the YMCA, was what, came here as a Y director, but in reality, we have one girl who swims in the team and Lyman team that swims, so they are cooperating, cooperating with us, but really, are they really, are we cooperating with them? And I think it's, I think the numbers are similar to the boys, where we may have maybe two or three boys.
Two boys.
So, it may be time to look at, maybe those schools should take the leadership role, and maybe we should co-op with them, and they should work, work with, uh, Eastern on getting the pool available. It might be time for us to realize, this isn't our program anymore. I only have one, one swimmer, I can't really call this my program. Uh, I understand what the, um, the, the work she's doing is, is important, but I think we need some other outreach here to court, to connect those sort of dots, and the same thing's true of the oil tanks. Uh, again, we're, we're, we have to get them out, uh, we're, we're under pressure from Deep to get them out. The capital improvement was put there to get them out, wasn't used, and as I recall, uh, and Murphy, you can correct me, but there was talk that we were gonna use unfinished capital improvement projects monies to balance off eighteen-nineteen budget. Sounds to me like this is unused capital improvement monies to pull these tanks out. Are we, are we pulling the same money? Because part of the recommendation from the town manager was.
I didn't have anything to try to balance the eighteen.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
We didn't do anything.
No, we didn't know, we didn't take that money, no, not at all.
It was, it was in the town, it was in the town manager's recommendation to use unused capital improvement money from the Board of Ed budget, and Murphy, you mentioned it many times during the meetings.
It may have been proposed by the town.
The manager, but no.
But as you recall, we essentially said to the town.
Okay, so do we know they didn't do it? All, all I'm suggesting is that we check into that before we, we both use the same pot of money.
I believe that the town meeting last week actually approved the money to remove the oil tanks.
Yeah.
It, was that not on that, in that collection of?
It was the wells that we'd already done, I don't know if it was the oil tanks.
No, the oil tank, well, they deferred action on the capital improvement plan.
Right, because.
For this year, because there was a question about approving it and then reapproving it when it goes out to bond, and there were.
Right.
There was a discussion about that. They did not approve the capital improvement plan.
The oil tanks were in that, in that.
Two of the oil tanks, yes, the two city schools.
You're talking about the bond authorization thing that was approved?
The bond authorization would have been for the previous two that haven't been done yet, if, if I wasn't at that.
There were some oil tanks in there, I just didn't know, I, I, she knows which oil tanks.
None of the oil tanks have been removed yet.
Okay, we'll get a definitive answer on that.
I don't wanna have us both using the same pot of money.
I'm quite sure it wasn't used, but I, I will get a definitive answer. I will follow up on that, and, and so, are you suggesting that when Tracy and the committee is doing all this exploration of how to deal with the pool issue and where people are gonna swim and whatever, that we also consider, is it really?
Is it really our program? I, I, yes, with, the administration should look at, is it time for Lyman and, for us to co-op with Lyman, and Lyman to figure out where their girls are gonna swim? Is it time for us to co-op with, with Ram? If, if I'm only have one out of fifteen girls, am I really co-op? When I had the pool, that was different, I don't have the pool anymore. Now, we need to look at, maybe we need to go the other way, maybe, maybe the expense needs to be on their side, I'm just saying, perhaps the administration can look at that and give us a recommendation.
Well, I think for the future, that's definitely a possibility, but right now, we're currently in the middle of, and we're getting, we're approaching the boys' season.
We can't undo what we're in the middle of, you're saying?
We can't undo what we're in the middle of right now, and we've received money from those schools already, so maybe for next year, that's a good idea, and, and I don't, I don't argue with that, but.
No, they haven't paid us yet. They haven't.
The girls' season hasn't paid us yet?
They haven't paid, no.
Well, then that's something that should be taken care of on the finance side, I think, that needs to get moved.
They usually pay by November something, they pay.
And if we are gonna, and if we are gonna continue this method, then we need to look at, I don't know what we're charging them, are we charging them based on using our pool? And now, you're suggesting we're gonna charge them based on?
They, they charge, they charge based in the amount of students that they have in the program.
Well, it, it, we shouldn't be making commitments for swimming next year if it's gonna be a big problem.
Right.
Right, yeah, so, let's.
Pool's gonna go away.
Right, the pool's gonna go away, yeah.
It's gonna go away, that's a, you don't know pool, yeah.
I was, I was looking more, we were looking as a committee more for cost savings, if we're spending thirty thousand dollars more on transportation, because the kids are going to all-the-way swim meets, and it's gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars to rent Eastern and have home swim meets, well, then let's do that. But if it's not, then it's, you know, it's, it's a moot point at that point.
Right, right.
Um, the other thing that I wanted to throw out there, I know I kinda closed, but, um, we were talking about Kramer and getting out of the building, um, and what it was going to take, Dawn hasn't had the ability, or there hasn't been a, a concrete plan for getting out of the building, there's some stuff that needs to get thrown out, there's some stuff that needs to get archived. There's some stuff that needs to be saved, there are certain documents that still need to be saved, we have to keep pop, paper documents. Um, I think that that's something that our committee's gonna need to look into, what the costs are for that, and Dawn's already started collecting some information, um, so it's not, you know, something we haven't started looking at, but I think that, um, the town could charge us rent because we're still taking up a section of that building, plus it was vandalized over the weekend from what I've heard, so that's another concern. So, um, I think kind of taking care of that liability on our part, that things that we need don't get damaged and things that we don't need kind of get removed from that space.
So, I don't know if Dawn informed me, I hope she did, that one of the issues that came up on her central office meeting is moving out of Kramer, and she is in charge of coming up with a plan, because not only her involved, we have instruction, there are some materials that have to do with instruction. There is stuff from Aliki's department that needs to be removed from the year nineteen-twenty. Um, there's, there are records that are things, so she is, yes, the person that is the leader of that group, but there's a lot of people that wanna meet with her, and she has a deadline of when the meeting, uh, contraction, right? Uh, and what needs to be done, so we'll be happy to inform you, particularly Aliki, what we're gonna do with your hundred, your nineteen-twenty toys that you have down there.
And all the records and the, all the records.
So, we are on top of that, we, we already discussed that in central office meeting, and we're on top of that.
Okay. Anything else, Tracy?
No, thank you.
Any questions for Tracy? Okay, uh, policy, policy committee.
Hold up. So, the committee looked at policy three-three-two-three regarding micro purchase guidelines last week as suggested in the forensic analysis. In our discussion, we realized we need more background info. The department administrators are meeting to come up with a proposal. We would like to learn more before recommending action. The policy committee will have a special meeting as soon as, as soon as possible and get back to you. We understand the board would like, would like action on this, on this issue in a timely
Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, we have to keep this moving, though, it's on the list of things we need to do, so, thank you, thank you. I know it was a hectic meeting last week because there were lots of opinions flying around, so.
It's some disorganization on my part, and I, I own that.
Okay, um, executive committee, we had an executive committee last week, and, um, the major things that we focused on in the meeting were the follow-up to continue moving forward on the implementation of the, the recommendations from the forensic analysis report that we all adopted as a board on the twenty-eighth of August, and, um, I sent you all, uh, you know, the, the, the progress that we had made that I reported to the Board of Finance at their request last week, and, uh, the following night, we met, and, um, we have a bunch of things to continue to work on, and, uh, I'm assuming that I will have a more full report on the follow-up items, uh, for October twenty-third meeting and possibly some action on a few things, if that makes sense to folks? If there's anybody on the board who hasn't, you know, hasn't like, registered the, the report and where we, how far we've made, how much progress we've made, and you wanna talk to me more about it, I'm happy to do that. Any other questions or comments on that? And I wanna thank the staff for all the work on this, there's a lot of extra work that, but it's good work, I think we're gonna be in a much better place moving forward. The other thing that we talked about was the proposed resolution that the Town Council is, has to adopt regarding, uh, a management structure for the health insurance fund, and, um, if any of you missed it, this was discussed at last week's Board of Finance meeting, it was also discussed at the Town Council meeting, um, does everybody have a copy? I emailed it all to you, does anybody need a copy of it here? Okay. We had a discussion, a short discussion about it at our meeting, and there were some issues raised, I think legitimate issues raised by board members about some of the things that may have been left out of this that we need to put into place. Um, I've informed the Town, Town Hall that the board has some suggested edits to this that we'd like to make, but aside from the sort of verbal conversation that we had last week, I haven't gotten any written suggestions from anybody on the board, so I would like to suggest that if you have suggested edits to this resolution, that you get them to me by end of day on Friday, because what I don't wanna run into is the Town Council has the Town Attorney, uh, review this, and then they put it on the agenda for a meeting, and we haven't had a chance to get our, our input, um, included in the resolution. They really do wanna hear from us and the Board of Finance about this before they adopt it, and it does affect us, because there will be, uh, an oversight committee set up, and it will need to have a representation, representative from the Board, Board of Ed, plus, um, some other things. Yeah, Tracy, do you have a question, comment?
I made a comment last week at the executive committee meeting, I believe, that, um, we need to have our attorney look at it, has that happened yet?
No, no. I wanted to get comments from our board so that I could ask Jessica Ritter to look at it.
Going forward, we have to make sure we protect our board and our superintendent from, from what goes on with the, the finance issues.
I could send it as it is to Jessica Ritter, and then.
That's at your discretion, but I'm just asking, that's all.
Yeah, but I, I thought maybe I'd get something in response from you all. So, if administration and/or board members have suggestions, I need them.
Okay, I already saw some that I told you that we, we disagree with.
It'd be great to have it in writing, though, thank you.
Trump, for example.
Thank you. Um, and that, yes?
Which one, which email are you referring to? You sent us like five different things.
Oh, I can't remember.
No, what does it say on the top of yours? There.
Here, I'll just give you the hard copy of it, and, and, and I, I can tell you at the end of the meeting, I can't tell you right now.
Resolution?
Says resolution. Yeah, it wasn't, it was over a week ago, I think that I sent it, but, um.
For executive committee agenda.
Yeah. Um, the other, the other, uh, items I just wanted to bring up, uh, as the Chair of the Board, um, uh, one is that, uh, there will be, uh, Equity Conference, Education Equity Conference that is free, and we just got a notice, I got a notice about it, um, today via email, on October nineteenth at, uh, it's a day long from nine A.M. to three-thirty P.M. on a Saturday at, uh, Goodwin College, and, um, uh, I just got a notice about it through another contact that I have, um, it's about, um, it's, I'll forward it all to you, it's about, uh, equity-based work to build on current efforts in education, and there also is, uh, Exploring Connecticut's Economy and Finances, um, presentation that's also in this email that might be of interest to people who are interested in what's going on with the budget and everything of that sort. We're in election season, elections are coming up on November fifth, I'd just like to caution, I can't boss anybody, but I'd like to caution board members about proper decorum and respect in online communications. We don't have a written policy per se that directs Board of Ed members on this, but I've had several complaints, um, from citizens about, uh, behavior online, and I just hope everybody really thinks, uh, before they shoot off responses in the, in the heat of the moment, that, um, don't reflect well on us as board members. And then, finally, as everybody knows, there will be a public hearing next, um, Wednesday the sixteenth before the Board of Finance, and I'm just checking my calendar, but I'm quite sure it starts at six P.M. I do plan on being there, um, yeah, six P.M. at Town Hall. Uh, and that, that's the hearing where they will hear from the public about the proposed cuts to the Town and the Board of Ed budgets.
Cut to the budget, to, they can't cut anymore from, uh.
Well, no, they, they.
The cuts they have made.
They made cuts last week. So, next Wednesday is the public hearing on those cuts.
They're gonna have a special meeting in Board of Finance afterwards?
They could still, after that meeting, decide to make changes.
Yes.
And, um, there will be a Town Meeting on the twenty-third of November, and then the referendum will be on December third. So, that's what's up with that. Any questions?
Lynn?
Yes?
Can I make a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
I was informed via text, um, to somebody who's at home watching this meeting, that Lyman pays for the entirety of transportation and the girls' swim team.
Mm-hmm.
That it's just our coach, and it has been our pool, but the cost of the girls' swim team is borne by the Lyman, um, school district.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Money's coming in, if we don't have a pool and we don't have a swim team, then it's (laugh) no longer an issue, thank you.
Okay, so we're on to a few more discussion.
One more, one more question, I don't think that the Town Council or the Board of Finance is having a meeting on November twenty-third, that's a Saturday. So, just, you can clarify it up later, but.
October.
November, October twenty-third?
No, they're having a, at, at the end of November, it's at the end of November, it's
Okay, but November 23rd is a Saturday.
It's the last Tuesday in November or something, maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I went through my calendar, I'm like, they're not meeting on a Saturday, I'm pretty sure.
But that's just the meet, there's nothing that can be done at that Town Meeting. By Town Charter, it automatically gets adjourned to the referendum despite what anybody shows up and says. People can't derail the referendum at that meeting. It's just formality in our Town Charter. So that's what will be happening that night.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have some act, I just want to jump ahead a little bit, say we have some action. We're not going to take them up now, but I want to signal that we have some action items tonight, including regarding the agreement with the Wyndham Board of Ed and the Wyndham Secretaries bargaining unit. I'm going to suggest that we defer action until after we have the executive session at the end and then take action after that. Just want to give people a heads up in case they're wondering when that's going to happen. So that will be the last thing on the agenda this evening. So, I see we have Aleeki here. Is that what Aleeki is here for?
Aleeki is here to talk to us about our NIAC accreditation, that is something that we all enjoy and we all are part of it. When we have it at this time.
Well, why don't you sit down at the mic and...
A little bit, a little bit different this year than before is that we're going to, she will, we will be receiving the district some technical assistance to help with the process of the NIAC accreditation. And one of the requirements of receiving that technical assistance is that the Board is, is the Board informed of what does it mean. So it's not necessarily money that we're receiving, those technical assistance.
Right, so is that, can you hear me now?
Want to introduce yourself for the people watching?
So my name's Aleeki Karagannis and I'm the Supervisor of Early Childhood Education in Wyndham. And we have the, well, we have three programs really. We have the Early Head Start, which involves home-based and center-based. And the center-based program is actually up for re-accreditation this year. And we are waiting for word that our 15-day window opens. They come every five years, they can come more often than that, but they come at least every five years. So that's what brings me here tonight, is the Office of Early Childhood has offered to provide technical assistance on an individualized plan for any program that's eligible for re-accreditation this year. It's free of charge and what they, I should advance, it's hard to sit here and look there.
You can take the microphone out of its thing and just hold it.
I think I'll have to. And, let's see if I can, oh, good. So for people that don't know what NIAC is, it's the National Association of the Education of Young Children. And the program as a whole has been accredited since 1997. Early Head Start has been accredited since 2001 when we took it over. They have, it's the NIASC equivalent of, for early childhood. So there are strict standards that we have to comply with. And this offer from the Office of Early Childhood is to provide support. They do this every now and again, many years ago before I was in this position, we took advantage of it. And what happens is they provide monthly meetings to go over anything that's new in NIAC, to ask, we do a self-assessment every year. They ask programs whether they'd like support in any of their identified improvement areas. And they also provide onsite support for three hours once a month for people to discuss any area, you know, that they'd like to work on. Our staff at Early Head Start identified two areas. There have been a lot of changes to the NIAC accreditation process and not to the standards so much, but to the process itself with modifications to the standards. And the teachers have identified intentional teaching practices as an area that they'd like to strengthen. The program is very intensive, so they start in September. We're a little late, we got our application in, but it was on hold until we get Board approval for this. And it ends at the end of December. They're still willing to work with us and they would retrofit it so that we get September's support as well. So I can answer any questions for you, but basically I'm asking for approval from the Board for us to pursue this free support.
Technical assistance.
Technical, they...
That's what they call it.
Yeah, they call it individualized support.
Yeah.
So is there anything that, any questions I can answer? Yes?
When is the visit? When will they come to visit?
For the accreditation visit?
For the accreditation, yes.
We don't know that. They could come anytime, every morning I check the portal. No, this application is for support from the Office of Early Childhood. It's not from NIAC itself. So NIAC, our, all of our paperwork is in and the next step is that we'll receive a notification in our portal saying that within the next 15 days, we're going to be out. And then what happens is we get a 24-hour notice saying, we'll see you in the morning or we'll see you in the afternoon. And we're waiting for that 15-day window to open.
Thank you.
Somebody over here had their hand up? So what, so what you need for us to do is make a motion and take action to approve acceptance of this technical assistance?
Yes, this application, which Dr. Garcia, I believe, has the original copy.
I don't, I don't know if we have to approve. I think the Board has to come up with a consensus that they're willing to.
Okay.
Right, and it's a signature that's required.
Yeah, the Chair, the Superintendent and the Chair of the Board have to sign it.
Yes, and when I inquired about that, they, they're, years ago, they didn't require a Board signature, but they're really trying to, as the Office of Early, Early Childhood gets more established, they're trying to reach out and make sure that Boards of Education know what their services are and what's available to them.
So, do, what, does the Board have any questions about that? Yes, Tracy?
Is the Office of Early Childhood a state?
It's part of the Department of Education.
It's a state?
I didn't know if it was like a NIAC kind of side thing?
No.
And it's no expense to the district?
No expense at all.
Mike, were you, did you have a question?
No, no.
It's, yeah, it's a relatively young office in the state. It was created under Malloy's administration.
It's about six or seven years, I think. And I lost my train of thought.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, do, do people have any objections to us moving forward and accepting this free technical assistance for our program here in town?
If it's for, if it's free, it's for me.
Well, if it's good and it's free and, and you're saying, you're saying as the Director of the program, you believe it's, it's really worth it.
I do. It's always good to get outside perspectives, especially at the state level.
Right. Okay, so you have our blessing.
All right.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying so late.
Yeah.
Thank you for fitting me into the agenda.
Thanks. The health insurance resolution, I don't think we really need to discuss. I men, mentioned it in my report from the Executive Committee, so given, given how delayed hour, I think we'll move forward to the action items. Does that make sense? Okay. The budget transfers, who's going to walk us through the budget transfers?
Well, first let's, I'd like to move that we approve the budget transfers that have been forwarded by the Finance and Audit Committee.
Motion's been made by Murphy, seconded by Tracy. Now we're open for discussion, which should be started with a little overview. It's in your packet?
Right, it is in, it is in the packet and the, the packet includes some budget transfers that have already been approved. So if you look at the BOE approval date that's over on the far right side, the ones that are blank are the ones that we need to consider to approve tonight. The longest and most complicated one is number 11. And I'd like to call your attention that that includes creating $65,500 for custodial overtime. And I, given the budget situation, I questioned, okay, first, what are we paying custodial overtime for? And why do we need to pay that much? It turns out that things that require custodial help on an unplanned basis are things like snowstorms where shoveling has to be done. But one of the questions that I then raised was, we have a number of part-time custodians, many of whom would like to have more opportunities to work. So would it be possible, at least in some of these instances, where we're paying people overtime to work weekends to open the building for other programs? For us to perhaps offer opportunities to part-time people who would like to have more hours and pay regular wages instead of overtime wages? So that's, that'll be looked into. But the other thing that we looked into is, so how much did we really spend on custodial overtime last year? And I believe the number turned out to be around $50,000. So, you know, in the, in the, we can go ahead and approve this budget transfer, but at the end, when we go through marking down the budget,
We take the line, we reduce that, yeah.
There's $15,000, it's going to get
Reduced.
disappeared out of that line item because it's overfilled. This is, in, in some cases, we're looking at budget items that were in last year's budget, but last year's budget was never fully adjusted to what we actually did last year, right? And now we're catching up to these little things and so this is one of the places in going through the budget line by line and asking, what, what should that number really be? And I hope $15,000 is small, but I hope that we find many, many more instances of similar ways to save a little money in the budget because we need to pare down a lot. Yes, sir?
I'm confused, why would we just not reduce by $15,000 now?
Well, we could, if you want to change that number to $15,000, I'll accept that as a...
You're telling me it's going to do that, I mean, you're just...
Okay, so, well, the problem is this is a transfer.
You just transfer less.
Well, yeah, but then we still have the money somewhere else that...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so what you need to do is you need to transfer it and then eliminate it from the budget. You see, if you, if you reduce the amount that you transferred, then you'd still have it wherever you transferred it from and it's still not really money that, you know.
Was number 11 in last week's transfers?
Yes.
Yeah, it was.
Mark, does that make, I, I, I understand what you're trying to do.
Right, I just, so we had...
I had the same thought, but then I said, okay, do you want to, how complicated do you want to make the bookkeeping? I think the thing to do is approve the transfer
And those reduce it.
And then correct the budget. Two steps. I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to accept the, the notion as part of what we're doing here that we will subsequently...
It could be so noted in the minutes.
Yeah, that we, that we will correct the budget by reducing the custodial overtime line to $50,000.
So that could be noted in the minutes, that that's the intent of the Board moving forward in relation to the discussion around this, okay?
Yeah, that, that ought to do it. Because we got a lot of adjustments to make to the budget.
Any other questions on the transfers that are before us?
Anything else that in here that we need to...
I would just say it's very nice to see the transfers.
Well, you see, it's cumulative.
Right.
So every month you will see what has been done. So if you can go back, you just look at, oh, this was done in October, November, December.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Any opposed? It's approved, thank you. At our, you know, we're, we're wrapping up the, the payment for the, for the forensic analysis report. We had a discussion with our attorney about the, the last remaining dollars in the, that we owe to the auditor. We had approved up to $35,000. In the end, there was so much work in the final analysis that we ended up incurring more expenses. We've, we've negotiated an agreement with the auditor and we're going to settle at $6,000. And he's going to swallow some of the, the balance there that he would have billed us. And so what I need tonight is formal action for the Board to approve the expenditure of the final $6,000 to close out that bill.
I move approving $6,000 to close out the expenditure for the forensic analysis.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Where is the money coming from?
Wherever any money comes from first, illegal, legal expenses.
Isn't that supposed to be a transfer from some another?
Legal expense.
It's legal expenses. And then we may get a notice saying we need to transfer.
Is it legal expenses?
Yeah. Oh, Mike, sorry.
So when we got the notice that we needed to approve more money, why didn't we get a notice asking for approval to go over budget what we approved? Why did they just assume, it's not really, we didn't really make a deal. They, they came back with a ridiculous overage and just figured, oh, they're going to just swallow it, let's not even call them. Whoever heard of that?
Whoever, well, you may remember in, in one of our meetings, we did approve some additional work to wrap up the, the report. And it ca, yeah, we did, we did.
What was that?
Oh, in the summertime.
Yeah, in the summertime.
It was whenever we met in July.
When they were here.
I didn't see, I haven't seen that on the minutes.
He told us it was going to take longer.
Yeah, and we approved more money. And they went over that.
We didn't say how much, we didn't say how much.
Yes, we gave them a dollar amount.
But we did approve an additional expenditure, that was in June. But in July, when we met, we expend, we, we said, you need to do this work to get this wrapped up. Mary?
I, I just want to comment that I think that there were some interviews that occurred later than, you know, that had been put off by, that appeared in the report that had to be, they were waiting for documents to be supplied, so that extended the amount of time they had to work to create the report. So that's why I think there was that additional sum.
You can vote, you can vote against it if you want to, Mike.
Just questioning it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, I was in the hearing July for that meeting, so I don't know anything about...
Okay. One vote no by Mike and abstention by Tracy. Thank you very much.
Skip to D and...
We're going to skip to D. On the next page.
This is the one I picked up from the front.
Oh, it was the one that, it was emailed on Tuesday.
Emailed yesterday.
Recommended approval of motion recommended by the Finance and Audit Committee that the Wyndham Public Schools expenditures for 2019-20 are constrained. Every purchase order will be approved by the Board's Business Manager and the Superintendent prior to implementation. I need a motion and then...
Moved.
Second.
Mark and Murphy made the motion and seconded. Now we're open for discussion.
Mike has a question.
Mike.
Who's the Business Manager?
Who's the Business Man, Rita?
Rita Parsiak.
Parsiak at this point.
At this point. She's at least interim Business Manager, but she's acting as Business Manager at this point.
So I do have a question if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Every purchase order, so that mean a purchase order for $10? I would have to, Rita and I have to take a look at it. 15, I mean, is there a dollar amount here, case, every purchase order?
I will leave it to the committee to answer that I really came in on the end of that discussion.
It's a long day.
Can you guys set a dollar limit on?
Purchase orders for like $10, just blanket purchase orders anyways?
Not necessarily. I mean, I'm just putting that amount, but you can have a purchase order for $50, $60.
Mark, do you think there ought to be a minimum, well, at least every purchase order is being reviewed by...
Well, yes, Rita, Rita is, Rita is reviewing it.
But the question is, do they also, does do, do you want to set a limit, a threshold for which ones need to also be reviewed by the Superintendent? You made the motion. You made the motion, so.
I did, I, my motion was even more restrictive, but I was willing to accept the, the fact that, I was told at the meeting that Rita and the superintendent were working together on all of the purchase orders, and I was, I was happy with that. If you're not, if you wanted a dollar value in there, Dr. Garcia will put a dollar value in there, but-
Rita does come to me.
The meeting, it was you and Rita were going to work together to make sure that no purchase order went through without-
And, and we do, Rita comes to me, she initially see a purchase order that she thinks is, is too much, is not appropriate, or, she comes to me, and we, we speak on a, on a daily basis.
But if you, you raised the issue about a dollar value, so are you asking us to put a dollar value on that?
Yeah, I want to know, I, I want to, for my clarification, I want to be clear about this.
And for Rita's clarification.
For my clarification, I need to know.
Do you have a suggested amount, dollar amount?
So, if the, if the dollar amount were, say, $100, how much more, how much would that actually save over everything? I mean, how many purchase orders do you actually see that are, that is, that are less than, say, $500?
Not that many, not that many, I see, yeah, yeah, I don't see.
So, so saying, so saying every purchase order doesn't seem at the margin to create a real additional burden. I mean, if we put a, if we put a limit of $500 or so, it wouldn't save you that much, because there are not that many orders that are smaller than that anyway. Is that right?
I don't have a number, exact number.
Well, I, I, I think, I think, and Mark, would you agree that it's better, let's leave it the way it is? If it turns out to be a burden, you can come back and ask us to?
Well, it sounds to me like the, like the superintendent is asking for a backstop, and so I'm willing to put in, any purchase order over $500 has to be approved by the superintendent.
What do people think?
Most places have a $1,000.
If you want that as an amendment, I'm a second, I, I seconded it, so I'll, I'll go along.
Okay, well, we'll go to $1,000, that's-
Does this have anything to do with $30,000?
Nope, 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 nope.
That has nothing to do with it, other policy.
What we really want to do, to do is just make sure that, particularly since we haven't passed a budget yet. And even if we knew that the budget was going to pass at the MBR, we have not actually gone through everything and got a budget together that we can put on the website and say, here's our MBR budget. Until we have something that we can say, here is our MBR budget, we want to make sure that nobody is spending money that we're later going to regret having spent.
I think $500 sounds good.
Well, I've heard $500 and I've heard $1,000, Mike.
I would, I would be willing to think that Dr. Garcia has already informed department heads and everybody making purchase orders where we are in the climate of the district right now. So, I, I would, I would say, you know, anything over $1,000 maybe, but anything less than that, it's more than likely going to be something, a necessity, something they need, and we're going to end up spending more ti, more money in, in, in labor, going over and looking at this stuff and, and not being able to address some serious issues.
So what I'm hearing is that, you know, our business manager, Rita Parsiac, is reviewing all the purchase orders diligently. Anyway.
She signs everywhere.
And, and if we put a dollar limit on the ones that must be brought to Dr. Garcia before they're signed off on, of $1,000 or, or over, you know, or, or, or over $1,000 has to automatically go, go before Dr. Garcia's eyes and get her, her, her approval. We, we also can be saying, if we, if we amended this resolution to say that, we could also be indicating in the minutes, our intent is that if, if, excuse me, Rita, our business manager, sees anything fishy, even if it's under $1,000, she would bring it to Dr. Garcia. So, does that, does that satisfy folks? So who would like to amend the motion?
I made the motion to amend it.
That's a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment?
So I'm not the only one.
So, so the, there's a friendly amendment to put a, one, an amount of $1,000 or more must be brought to the superintendent by the business manager. Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Unanimous. Thank you. We have public comment before we go into executive session to finish out the rest of our business tonight. Anybody want to speak under public comment? Okay, I entertain a motion.
The motion we move into executive session for items pertaining to reports and records of strategy regarding the tentative successor agreement between the Wyndham BOE and the Wyndham Secretaries.
Second.
Motion's been made by Tracy, seconded, all those in favor going into executive session? Unanimous. That's at 9:19.